I didn't realize we were doing it this long. Good evening and welcome to the Town of New Paltz Planning Board's December 16th, 2013 meeting. I would note that we have two separate and distinct public hearings tonight. We're going to do the first one, Lerner subdivision project up first. But before we do that, it is time for review and approval of minutes of December 9th. I have a motion to approve the minutes.
Make a motion?
Thank you. Augusta, second?
Second.
Thank you, Peter. Any discussion on them? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. One extension on that, Kelly with Lyle. Okay, I'm going to open the first public hearing. Just to comment, if you want to speak at the Park Point Public Hearing, there is a sign-up sheet behind Kelly on the table. Please put your name down on that and we'll take it from there. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing on the Lerner two-lot subdivision on Albany Post Road? Thank you, Lyle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tom. Is anybody here for the Lerner two-lot subdivision on Albany Post Road? None? Okay. If I have to come up, we'll do an application review. Okay.
Since the last submission, the town attorney asked for the ag district note and that's the only addition that we've changed since the last submission.
Okay.
I don't know if that sounded good copy but I'm here on this.
Yeah, we'll get it signed otherwise. Board have any comments? I'd like to go into the short form seeker determination on this two-lot subdivision.
I think that was.
Dave?
Does the action exceed any type-one threshold in 6-NYCRR, Part 617.4? The answer is no. It's an unlisted action. Will the action receive coordinated review as approved for unlisted actions in 6-NYCRR, Part 617.6? The answer is no. It will be uncoordinated. Could the action result in any adverse effects associated with existing air quality, surface of groundwater quality or quantity, noise levels, existing traffic patterns, solid waste production or disposal, potential for erosion, drainage, or flooding problems? This is a one-lot subdivision of rather large acreage, 26 acres. The total 30.8 acre tract. It's a very minor impact. The answer would be no to that. Could the action result in any adverse impact impacts associated with aesthetic, agricultural, archaeological, historic, or other natural or cultural resources? The answer would be no. It's presently a residential parcel. Could the action result in any adverse effects associated with vegetation or fauna, fish, shellfish, or wildlife species, significant habitats or threatened or endangered species? The answer to that is no. Could the action result in any adverse effects associated with the community's existing plans or goals as officially adopted, or change in use or intensity of use of land or other natural resources? The proposal meets the zoning. The answer would be no. Could the action result in any adverse effects associated with growth, subsequent development, or related activities likely to be induced or proposed by the action? And it's a one-lot subdivision, so I'd say the answer would be no to that. Could the action result in any adverse effects associated with long-term, short-term, cumulative, or other effects not identified in the above? Answer is no. Could the action result in any adverse effects associated with other impacts, including changes in the use in quantity or type of energy? The energy use would be for one additional residence. I'd say the answer was no. Will the project have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? There is no critical environmental area, so the answer would be no. Is there or is there likely to be controversy related to potential adverse environmental impacts? It doesn't appear to be.
No.
So, based on this information and review of the plans and other documentation that's been provided, the board can consider negative declaration, significant impact.
I'd consider that.
Is there a second to Augusta's motion?
Second.
Thank you, Peter. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
I don't know if we did, but we have a request for a waiver for the installation in accordance with the two-lot subdivision of sidewalks, curb, water main, storm sewers, sanitary sewers, street signs, and street trees. So, we all know where it is out on Albany Post Road. None of this exists out there now, so I will make a motion to grant the waiver of...
What about sidewalks? Not that we want to require sidewalks, but we want to set aside in case we will have sidewalks here in the future.
You want to put in a...
Seems like we should, yeah. Isn't that our policy?
Yeah.
Let's do it this way. Request for a waiver for the curbs, water mains, storm sewers, sanitary sewers, street signs, and street trees. Motion to that effect, Peter?
So...
Augusta, a second?
Sure.
Any discussion on those?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Sidewalks. We're looking what?
15-foot wide easement along the front.
So, the board would be requesting that a 15-foot easement along the front of the property on Albany Post Road.
15? 15.
Doesn't mean there's any construction going on, but it does if we ever do get to the extent that...
You have to keep in mind that this was part of a former subdivision, that that wasn't required. So, this would be like a spot area where that 15-foot right-of-way would exist and the rest of those lots were, which, you know, it was 160 acres. They don't have that.
We've got to start someplace.
Start someplace is generally the statement here and anytime they have a request for it, but...
Yeah.
Until we get sidewalk districts, until we know where we are, all we're doing it right now is requesting the easements.
On the map.
On the map.
Yeah, sure. Specifically noted as a sidewalk easement?
Yes, we have a line each for it. So, we can send it here.
So, a motion to include sidewalk, the standard Planning Board sidewalk easements to the two-lot subdivision.
So...
Thank you. Any other discussion on it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Based on that's the only change we've seen to the plan on that. Can I get a motion for preliminary approval?
Can I make one?
Yep.
The original subdivision said that the tree line between lot 1 and 2 was not... No trees were to be cut and removed within 25 feet of the boundary. This is creating lots 1A, 1B. I think there's a tree line here and I'm wondering whether you want to make that some provision for the common boundary between 1A and 1B.
If you look at the bottom, note number eight.
Those of lot 2 shall not cut or remove the trees within 25 feet of the other side of the common boundary except for dead or diseased trees.
That would apply to this boundary line.
Which one you guys?
The one to the east. Going towards... The question is, do you want it to apply to the new boundary line being created between 1A and 1B?
You mean from Albany Post Road?
Yeah, the common boundary between the new...
The new common boundary. That's all part of the same tree line, wouldn't it be?
No. One to the north.
Come on here.
1B, right now, the tree line that's on the right side, if you're facing towards Albany Post, is protected by that note. That note would apply to that protection. The question is, the tree line to the left side, it should look so...
Yeah.
Whether you want that new provision to apply.
I mean, you see a tree line there.
You mean, again, the tree line that I'm looking at is from Albany Post Road into the property to the first intersection, turn point.
The existing note seems to be the common boundary.
Around the... Clarify what you... It's this boundary here.
So, should it say both sides?
That's where...
So, the question is, do you want us to look to that?
Where the trees are? Where the trees are?
Well, looking at the picture, possibly. If there are no trees, you don't have to cut them.
Michael, do you know?
There's trees there.
Okay, on all of the sides of the...
They're on the... No, they're showing like, that's the tree line there, the tree line there coming through.
Oh, I see, I see. Okay. My recollection is that note was intended to preserve the existing arrangement.
Yeah, that's why the lot was, you know, was cut off there and didn't follow the stone wall all the way down too because they didn't want to cut into this area. They wanted to preserve this area in here so that this existing house wouldn't see that, any development on that new lot.
So, that's the purpose of this?
That covenant was for the original lot, so now you want it included as 1A and 1B, or, yeah, 1A and 1B because that's, the original note was from the early subdivision from 2006 or whatever it was, of the whole property.
So, we want to preserve, again, I'm trying to get the right tree line.
Yeah.
The one that's shown right now on lot 1B.
Uh-huh.
That runs parallel to the stone wall.
Well, it wouldn't include the stone wall because the new property line doesn't follow the wall all the way down.
No, but I'm just saying the tree line follows.
I mean, we can just add to the note 1A and 1B and add...
Yeah, okay. All right. So, we're going to add a note that...
Yeah, that's 1 and 2, 1A, 1B.
For the lots 1A and...
It originally said something more than 1 and 2, but I had narrowed it down to 1 and 2 because they were involved here. Now, we can add 1A and 1B.
Okay. I think that's what we're trying to get to.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So, we're going to add that note on the tree line. Anything else on that?
It's a real minor typo here on the zoning compliance table. It's all A1 and A2. It's spread out as R8 and R5.
Just I'm circling, so he knows what you're looking at.
Yeah, I mentioned that the last time.
Okay.
Just these two. I'm sure it's a typo. The zoning district is A1 and A2 there.
Okay. Want to mark it?
A1 and A2. You're going to give me the language though.
Right. Talk with Dave. Dave has the language for the note. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? A motion for preliminary approval of the Lerner two-lot subdivision on Albany Post Road?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Have a secret. I haven't finished.
Oh, you're done.
Can I have a motion to waive final public hearing on the Lerner two-lot subdivision? As I said, has no comments from the public on the lot. It's on through.
So...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Have final approval for the Lerner two-lot subdivision?
Conditional.
Conditioned on...
Subject to revision of the plan in accordance with the year's comments, subject payment of recreation fees and the outstanding fees that may be due, and inclusion of the two islands that were discussed tonight regarding the tree boundary and the sidewalk easement.
So, that was your motion, Peter?
My motion.
Okay.
Took the words out.
We got it, Kelly? Okay.
Second.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Lyle, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Now, let him go.
Check with Dave on the language for the note for the sidewalk and then, once you clean up to make those modifications to the plans, then we can sign off on it when all the fees are paid, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Yep, that's two.
Do we get a composition note for it? Because I haven't seen it.
I could get you one.
Well, I'm busy filling this out. Have a motion to open up the public hearing on the Park Point project.
So, moved?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The public hearing for the Park Point project is, we've had it opening for two meetings There is a, both public hearings are for the seeker determination on the Park Point project and the subdivision of the lands, which has been running concurrent with the seeker on the project. This is a final environmental impact statement. It is a board document, Planning Board document. It is, well, we, why we opened it up to the second time is because there was information that came out after the draft environmental impact statement was submitted, after the public hearings on the draft environmental impact statement was submitted. In those areas, the board was seeking comment on the new information that was presented in the, after we had completed the hearing last year. Those areas were soils, pesticide impacts, soil remediation actions, Section A, Section E, groundwater, proposed water supply, and Section K, community service fiscal impacts analysis, and the pilot. So, the board would be looking for comments on those three areas. I will point out that we've had numerous comments already on the impact of pilot or lack of thereof to the community, both from the town board last week and from the school board. Both the taxing jurisdictions are directly related with the pilot. This board does not determine the pilot or have standing on it, although information received at the public hearing, information received at the, all the documentation, draft environmental impact statement, final environmental impact statement, and finding statement is part of the seeker determination by this planning board and could be used by the IDA who makes a determine on that in their hearing process. So, I have a few names. What I ask you to do is to use the podium, speak into the microphone, make sure you're heard, give your name, address, and I'm going to try and limit you down to five minutes. If I raise my hand, you got about a minute left. I'd ask you to be cognizant of the time that you're up there. Written comments are always accepted, so if you have a long presentation, we can always, you know, you could always just turn around and submit the written comments. People have done that. So, with that, now I'll start off with Brian, and I'm going to screw up last name, so I'm going to try first names and then go from there.
Evening. My name is Brian Kennoir, and I'm a resident of the village of New Paltz.
Can I just tap that mic to see if it's...
Look in the back and see if the switch is on.
Now, it's on.
Okay, you had it right the first time. Okay.
My name is Brian Kennoir. I'm a resident of the village of New Paltz. Some of you may recognize me as a member of the school board also. I am not here tonight representing the school board. I'm here as a resident, but I do serve on the board committee that was researching pilot agreements, particularly as it affects school taxes, and the committee that prepared the statement that Vice President Ruth Quinn gave last week on behalf of the school board. And I wanted to share with you tonight some other information that was not included in that statement because it didn't pertain directly to school district revenue. I'm going to quote directly from a press release dated May 1st, 2012, from the Office of the State Comptroller. In 2010, IDAs provided $1.3 billion in tax exemptions. Although those exemptions were offset by $785 million in payments in lieu of taxes, local taxpayers picked up a $483 million tab to compensate for the IDA-supported projects. Additionally, the average cost per job gained was $2,659, an increase of 9% from previous years. The report analyzes the aggregate net tax exemptions provided by IDAs in each region compared to the average home value in the region to gauge the additional taxes a typical homeowner may be paying to cover the exemptions. Taxpayers pay up to $140 more dollars per year in local taxes depending on where they live. And another direct quote, this time is from the executive summary of the Comptroller's Annual Performance Report on Industrial Development Agencies for fiscal year 2011, quote, "After years of recession followed by a stagnant or slow economic growth, municipal expenses are outpacing revenues causing deterioration in the fiscal health of many local governments in New York State. To varying degrees, deterioration is evident in the number of local governments facing persistent operating deficits, depleted fund balances, and greater reliance on short-term borrowing. The fiscal challenges of local governments and school districts can be traced to a variety of factors, including a reduction in state aid, an overreliance on volatile and economically sensitive revenues, a more restrictive environment for raising local property taxes, and the overall loss of industry and commerce, which has resulted in a loss of population and decline in the tax base. IDAs can assist municipalities by encouraging the creation of new businesses or the retention of existing businesses, thereby helping to stimulate overall economic activity. However, it is vitally important that the granting of tax exemptions for a project will generate an economic benefit in the form of well-paying jobs and/or future new revenues for local governments. In short, incentives should be coupled with performance," unquote. Comptroller's report talks about the need for economic development as a means for local governments to grow their tax base, and one of the few methods available to municipalities to increase their levy limit under the 2011 tax gap law. It goes on to say in the conclusion portion of the report that, quote, "The sustained negative impact of the great recession on local budgets necessitates that economic development activity in New York State be targeted to those projects to clearly demonstrate the potential for enhancing the tax base and generating new economic activity in the community," unquote. The college has inserted that it is not increasing enrollment with this project, so I fail to see where the increased economic activity for our local businesses will come from. My understanding is that job creation from the project will be low-paying and minimal. According to the report from the Police Commission, the New Paltz Police Department can see an increase in costs of over $12 million over the life of the pilot. Once the temporary construction jobs are gone, New Paltz taxpayers and the taxpayers of the school district will be left holding the bag for the next 25 years while Wilmerite collects its profits and pays a fraction of its tax obligation. Without significant job creation or other economic benefits to the community, this project does not meet the requirements for the granting of a pilot agreement. I have nothing negative to say about SUNY. They've always been good neighbors to the town and village, or about this project. If the college feels they need the housing, who am I to say differently? Let them build it with the goodwill of most of our residents. However, I believe the planning board has the authority to approve this project conditionally, contingent on Wilmerite paying its full share of the tax obligation, and I urge you to do so. Thank you."
Thank you, Brian. Andy Weiss?
Okay, go ahead, try it.
No.
It's a simple Polish name.
Simply, yeah. That's what it was. There were no vowels. I couldn't do it.
I have one vowel. Two vowels. Okay. Is that mic working? I don't think so.
No, it's not.
Can anything make work, or should I just talk loud?
Go ahead.
Okay. My name is Andy Weiss Bartzek, and I live in the town of New Paltz, or the New Paltz School District, which, as we all know, is our largest tax bill in the area. And I oppose the pilot. As the last speaker said, it's not going to bring new business or new economic development. It's just going to house people who have to come to campus anyway, to work or to study. And while researching something else, if I remember correctly, I asked the assessor of the town of New Paltz, what percentage of the area of New Paltz, just the town of New Paltz... of New Paltz, is a tax exempt, and I was told one-third, which leaves a great burden for the rest of us who have to pay for those who are tax exempt. So I oppose this pilot. I don't think it, uh, fulfills the mandates of that. Uh, what I wanted to talk about was the wastewater treatment plant. I went to the Park Point, New Paltz site and really could not find out anything about that. I don't know whether the details will be of what sort of a plant is gonna be, secondary treatment, tertiary treatment, paternory treatment, uh, it's going to happen, but I did find a description that the, uh, treated water is going to sort of go down a hill into a detention pond, and some of that will be absorbed into the ground to recharge the aquifer. Now, I don't know if, how many people in the area have, uh, UV disinfectant lights like we do in our wells, but, uh, the thought of treated wastewater going into the, whoa! Going into the ground close to people's personal wells, uh, seems to me rather unhygienic. And the other water too, it's, some of that's gonna seep out of the detention ponds, I assume, into the groundwater and then be taken up by nearby wells. Uh, so I think that needs to be looked into a little more carefully for public health reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Claire, you were the one that got the microphone.
Whoa!
Thank you. Joan?
Hi, I'm Joan Bender. Um, according to Wikipedia, taxpayers have footed a $50 million bill for the cleanup efforts of the December 29th, 1991 PCB disaster in four SUNY New Paltz dormitories, Bliss Cape Engage and Scudder Hall, as well as Parker Theater and a Coekindal Science Building, but this estimate does not include costs to taxpayers after 1997. Cleanup crews neglected to cut off the supply of contaminated water, consequently, the disaster spread to other buildings, including Coekindal. You can see dioxindorms.com as well as, as a reference for this. Um, the Wikipedia entry on journalist Eric Francis Coppolino, which, who covered the PCB disaster, notes that he was banned from campus and alleged a public nuisance. He sued the university and settled. At www.dioxindorms.com, numerous articles by Mr. Coppolino chronicle his coverage, including fines incurred by the SUNY New Paltz from the Environmental Protection Agency, differing viewpoints of officials regarding the quality of PCB and dioxin cleanup in the dormitories, and statements by students and parents. One of those students is the now-deceased Jennifer Folster, whom stated before she passed away from leukemia that doctors informed her that exposure to environmental toxins combined with a genetic predisposition, uh, which the doctors claimed caused her acute myelogenous leukemia. Thank you. Jennifer Folster stated that her roommate in Caen Hall, which had also been cleaned, had a miscarriage the year they moved back into the dorm. This is all on Mr. Coppolino's website. Um, and I know this all seems pretty negative, but there is a silver lining in this, so hold on. Um, I'm just gonna mention a couple other negatives. SUNY New Paltz had up to $158,000 in fines from the Environmental Protection Agency regarding this PCB cleanup standards. But, now the silver lining is, should new dorms be built? And these dorms that, you know, the PCB disaster happened in, where there's been cleanup and it's disputed whether it's been good or not, should, should they, um, be closed down forever and new dorms be built? So that's the silver lining, okay, I'm not always negative. Should taxpayers, after facing $50 million though, in payments helping SUNY clean up this disaster, should they, should, is it really fair for them to bear, like, the whole brunt of, you know, taxpayer costs again, like, in this scenario? I'm hoping that there can be some give and take here. With SUNY New Paltz, another idea, if they build the new dorms and they want to keep the other dorms but temporarily shut them down to maybe do some more cleanup work, um, would they, how would they, um, decide to be accountable to the community in guaranteeing that these storms, Bliss Cape Engage and Scudder are cleaned up? What will the future legal liability of SUNY New Paltz be for the students that are making allegations regarding their health? Are these costs gonna be trickled down to the taxpayers too? I mean, would it be in the interest to actually do a huge cleanup thing, build new dorms? Dr. Donna Flahen, Flahenhan, who works at SUNY New Paltz, director, and is director of the Lower Manhattan Public Health Project, states in an NPR interview, which is linked on the dioxindorms.com website, that "The anecdotal evidence since I've arrived in 2004 is pretty strong that students' health has been affected, and also people who work in the building for long hours, particularly the clerical staff." Dr. Flahen concedes students have complained about finding white dust powder on their beds, but Gullen, a SUNY New Paltz official, stated building asbestos is contained. Some dormitory students claimed to have found white dust on their beds and were informed that asbestos were in the ceilings above their dorm rooms. Dr. Flahen requested her office be in a clean building. Lastly, Dr. Wardstone, a New York State wildlife toxologist, stated that he thinks further testing should be done at SUNY New Paltz. So I guess the question is, what premium should SUNY New Paltz pay, as well as taxpayers, to help keep the students and employees safe? And I have the CNN out for anyone who wants to look at it, but really, there's a lot more on Eric Coppolino's website, dioxindorms.com. And, uh, there have been a lot of cleanup efforts, and, for this, and, you know, I can't really speak to whether these dorms are safe now or not, but, um, there could be advantages in building new dorms and shutting down the old ones, in my opinion. But as for the tax issue, I really do feel and hope that there could be less brunt bared by the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Erwin?
Good evening, and, uh, I wanna thank the planning board for making itself, uh, so available for community input. This is a thorny issue, and, uh, there are many perspectives, it's not just a us versus them, uh, topic, and, uh, I want to, uh, sort of, cut to the chase and make clear, uh, my own misgivings, partly about, um, about the tax issues, but also the, the prior question about the necessity for, uh, the Park Point project in the first place. I'm sure you have heard, um, that there are corporate executives from the, the Park Point project, and very well-intended and justifiably well-respected administrators and faculty, including some very good friends of mine, who, uh, are convinced that there's a, an urgency for the, uh, building of this, uh, project to accommodate, uh, students who need what is called the college experience. I'd like to talk to you about why the world will continue to rotate and the sun will continue to shine even if the, uh, Park Point project was not even built. The reason I wanna bring that up is, I'm very concerned about how developers come to small and medium-sized towns like, uh, New Paltz, and they say, "Well, if you dare to question our eligibility for a pilot, we'll go somewhere else and we'll bring our affluence and, uh, employment prospects elsewhere, and your community will, uh, suffer forever." So, uh, here's the line of reasoning and information I'd like to blunder here. At this time, my best estimate is that there are well over forty apartments for rent in New Paltz and adjacent towns such as Gardner, Modena, and Highland. The larger apartment complexes such as the New Paltz Gardens on Colonial Drive and the Southside Terrace Apartments, and I can vouch for both of them, uh, I, I lived at the, uh, the one on Colonial Drive when I first came to New Paltz, uh, in the nineteen seventies, and my parents, uh, lived, uh, during their, uh, summers at, uh, Southside. These are both really very fine locations, and, uh, I think any reasonable person would view them as highly desirable. Uh, but these, uh, apartments, apartment complexes have had ongoing and conspicuous advertisements for rent to SUNY New Paltz students for many, many weeks already. These are listed in today's Daily Freeman and in the, uh, Weekly Almanac that accompanies the New Paltz Times. I have them here, but I'm sure you, the people, uh, have your own copies and need not read these, but I have them handy if you wish to look at them. What I count is a total of nineteen ads, with many of them indicating several vacancies for one, two, three, or more individuals, and now I'm not even including the apartments for rent that one can ascertain through individual real estate brokers, some of whom specialize in, uh, providing servicing and accommodating, uh, students from out of town who seek apartments, because a lot of folks who rent their own basement apartment or attic apartment don't want to screen applicants themselves, they entrust that kind of decision-making to a professional, uh, broker, and the students don't get charged for the, uh, commission, it comes out of the landlord's rent, as I'm sure most of you, uh, know about this sort of thing, anyway. This brings us to the question of why so many apartments are indeed vacant when many of them are in desirable locations, many are just a five or 10-minute walk to the campus. And what can the planning board, the town board, and the tax assessor do to resolve the problem? Well, as more and more, uh, land is removed from the tax rolls, as more and more exemptions and easements and pilots are generously granted to developers and land conservancies, the existing landlords and homeowners are forced to make up the, uh, the, uh, tax revenues for all those who have not been, uh, paying their fair share. So these landlords and homeowners are in turn forced to raise their rents in order to stay in business, in order to keep up their mortgage payments, in order economically to survive and remain here in New Paltz. Time's up?
One minute.
One minute, alright. The systematic and long-term consequence of all, of this removal of property from the tax rolls is that tenants, especially students, are forced to pay higher and higher rents, which they find more and more unaffordable in the present stagnant economy. So the problem is not a shortage of housing in general, which is what we've been, uh, hearing so much talk about, but rather a shortage of affordable housing. Pilot programs and tax exemptions are an underlying and continuing, uh, cause of this, uh, problem. Uh, I don't have time now to talk about what is sometimes represented as the college experience, but I want to assure you, as someone who, uh, spent four years, uh, as an undergraduate and about, I don't know, over a decade as a graduate student, because there was a time when it was funding a graduate student, uh, the, the simple fact of the matter is, one can have a very profoundly enriching, uh, experience, living off-campus and taking advantage of all kinds of things about the college's experience, especially when you can afford to join clubs, subscribe to, uh, journals, uh, go out at night, and live it, live a decent life. Anyway, thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Erwin. David?
Mike, you and I may be among the handful who were here two decades ago with the very beginning of the community's struggle against war. Thought I'd just call that to the attention of people here. It was an epic battle, as many people are already aware of, and, uh, I think it was much to the credit of the community that it participated as vigorously as it did in that whole decision-making, uh, at that time. I just wanted to add, uh, some pragmatic considerations concerning this issue of the pilot. As I testified before in response to the, the DEIS, I think it's totally unfair to make the rest of the community subsidize this large corporation or the college. Wilmerite is not going elsewhere, as far as we know, if they don't get a pilot, and certainly the college is not going elsewhere if they don't get a pilot. So I've got several pragmatic, uh, suggestions, and, uh, I would urge that the planning board get advice from its attorney as to the appropriate language and legality of what I'm suggesting. Pretty possible, alternative is, to consider for how to address the pilot issue and to assure home rule against the potential pro-developer bias of the county IDA. First of all, to incorporate in the seeker finding statement the mitigation condition that Wilmerite pay full tax burden with no pilot. A second alternative could be to turn down the Park Point seeker approval on major environmental impact grounds, such as growth inducements, traffic, wetlands, impact, carbon footprint of the building plans, et cetera, various things that have been mentioned by various people in all the testimony before now, and which the planning board has considered. That the seeker approval be turned down, and when and if certain changes are made to the development proposal, and the developer has agreed to drop the pilot, I'm sure the planning board would be quite interested in reconsidering the proposal. But it would be a modified plan, and would not have this onus of the pilot connected to it. And a third alternative could be for the town board to pass site plan approval stage impact fees per unit of Park Point, that in effect would neutralize the fiscal damage done to the town and the school district by an approved pilot program. And this would probably have to be worded as a generic policy for dealing with all future, uh, projects that are seeking a pilot, uh, rather than big projects specifically. But I, I leave those with you as several alternatives that might be useful to consider as a way for the planning board and the town board to be proactive about this, rather than relying entirely on the discretion of what seems to be a rather pro-developer county IDA.
Thank you very much, David. Paul?
Professor Berber? Good evening. I've learned a lot from this man. Learned a lot from that gentleman, just passed. Um, wish to thank the majority of the members of the planning board who were deciding last week to keep this all-important public hearing open so that you can continue to gather information and gain understanding about the complex issues having to do with the negative impacts of this project to the natural, the economic, and the cultural environment of New Paltz. Hundreds of alert citizens understand that this board has moved ahead with its review, and that the applicant's complaints about delays have arisen solely from their own failure to provide accurate and complete data and information from the very start of the process when they first applied to this board, up to including the submission of their draft environmental impact statement and recently their final environmental impact statement. The last week's meeting, several members of this board indicated that new information has come to light and hence the need to continue the public hearing for this evening. I thank you for that. I will not repeat my previous comments, and I do not seek to extend this public hearing simply for the purpose of delay. As chairman of this board, I fought against those kinds of delays, however, I wish to call the board's attention to an issue which has not been discussed by this board previously, to my knowledge, and has not been entered into the public record. On December- Hundreds of alert citizens understand that this board has moved ahead with its review and that the applicant's complaints about delays have arisen solely from their own failure to provide accurate and complete data and information from the very start of the process, when they first applied to this board, up to including the submission of their draft environmental impact statement and recently their final environmental impact statement. The last week's meeting, several members of this board indicated that new information has come to light and hence the need to continue the public hearing for this evening. I thank you for that. I will not repeat my previous comments, and I do not seek to extend this public hearing simply for the purpose of delay. As chairman of this board, I fought against those kinds of delays. However, I wish to call the board's attention to an issue which has not been discussed by this board previously, to my knowledge, and has not been entered into the public record. On December 10th, 2010, Attorney George Lithgow wrote to Michael Calamano and the members of the planning board at that time. A copy of that letter is attached to my written comments. Mr. Lithgow properly disclosed that Larry Wolinsky, a partner in his own law firm, Jacobowitz and Gubitz, was a member of the Board of the SUNY New Palt Foundation Incorporated. In that letter, Mr. Lithgow states, "There is no conflict of interest." I respectfully submit to this board that Mr. Lithgow cannot and should not be the person to determine whether a conflict of interest exists. Just last week, at this public hearing on December 9th, Mark Gallagher, Chief Strategy Officer of Pattern for Progress of Newburgh in Orange County, spoke on behalf of the Park Point project. Mr. Larry Wolinsky, who I just mentioned, is on the board of the SUNY New Palt Foundation. He also happens to serve as currently the chairman of the Board of Pattern for Progress. Despite Mr. Lithgow's claims, and I have the highest regard for this gentleman, that he has established procedures to ensure there could be no inference of impropriety, there is no way he can claim ignorance of Mr. Wolinsky's goals and strategy for this project. I think that puts him in a tough spot and it puts his law firm in a tough spot, and I'm asking you to look into that. Our public officials and consultants must not only avoid actual conflicts of interest, they must also diligently avoid the appearance or possibility of conflicts to maintain the confidence, in order to maintain the confidence of our citizenry and avoid costly lawsuits by those disappointed with the outcomes of planning board decisions. I respectfully request that this planning board submit this issue to the Town of New Palt Ethics Committee to ensure that your deliberations are informed by those who have expertise in this matter, and so that you can avoid prematurely enabling a project that will be subject to lawsuits against our town, which would cost all of us who are taxpayers and residents. A thorough vetting of any possible conflicts and documenting this in your finding statements will also ensure that the members of this planning board do not suffer the same consequences as the planning board of our neighboring town, Bloomingburg, New York. Those planning board members unwittingly approved a major residential project that now appears to have been tainted by ethical and perhaps legal improprieties from its very inception. Last week, citizens of New Palt asked you to look into other issues that may involve impropriety on the part of SUNY New Palt administration, the officials. A local investigative reporter recently reported on a questionable action on the part of the Ulster County Industrial Development Agency with regard to a possible conflict of interest for one of its own consultants. The IDA seems to have taken the action of absolving one of its consultants and itself from a possible conflict or appearance of conflict reported to them, once it went again quite properly, by the legal consultant in question. Residents of Ulster County are still looking into that issue. As the lead agency for the state environmental quality review related to this application, all the other involved and interested agencies, including the Ulster County IDA, are counting on each one of you to conduct the hard look required by seeker. Please give yourselves and give our community the gift of time to make sure you are not enabling a project whose size and complexity is the largest to ever hit our small town. In closing, I wish to have the words of much revered Senator Scoop Jackson with regard to the value of public comment by citizens such as you are hearing tonight. This is what Senator Jackson has said. "Planning without citizen participation is neither democratic nor wise." There, referring to the citizens, "Their practical wisdom and support make plans capable of implementation. Their knowledge of local conditions fills gaps in the planner's data and information, and their varied interests diminish the tendency of planning to involve a single purpose." Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Ben Miller.
Hi, my name is Ben Miller. I'm a resident of New Palt. I don't have anything prepared tonight. I wasn't even sure I was going to be here, but I'm glad I had the opportunity, and I appreciate you guys keeping the public comment open about this. There were some comments made at the very beginning, Mike, when you kind of set the stage for the public comment that I do take some issue with, and I'm just going to try to address those now. As Paul mentioned, and the way I understand it, from being at the IDA meeting and asking them personally, you guys are where the buck stops. You are the lead agency for seeker, which means that you, and you alone, have the ability to approve the project or deny it, and if you choose to approve it, you can approve it with the condition that they pay their full taxes, that there is no pilot. Each of you wrote on that, you made your own personal decision, but make no mistake, people know you guys have the power to do that. I don't know if you all know that you have the power to do that, but you do. You have the ability to decide whether or not the pilot is granted, whether or not they can continue to pursue the pilot. I would much prefer that the issue rests here and the issue is settled here, rather than we have to ask the other taxing authorities to weigh in. They're not in charge of the seeker process. You guys are. This is the economic fiscal responsibility that you chose when you took these roles, and believe me, much happier it's you than me. I appreciate it's not an easy job. But I can't speak on the environmental aspects, and I certainly have the greatest respect for anybody who just wants to utilize their property in a legal manner, and I understand the willingness to take advantage of whatever, you know, tax advantages there are. But I trust, and maybe I'm a little naive this way, I hope that the government will step in when things become unhealthy for its citizens, when things are taken advantage of that shouldn't be. That's my concern, that's my hope. I appreciate you guys listening. I do think keeping the public comment open so that you can get more information on this, because honestly, if that's how this public comment is being opened, it suggests to me that not everyone is fully aware of their responsibilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. John Johnson?
Yeah. Hello, my name's John Johnson. I'm back. If this wasn't such an important issue, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't be coming here week after week. I have a few points. Point number one, number of units. The applicant states that the proposed building consists of 228 units. What they're proposing is a dormitory. The dormitory has 732 bedrooms. That's what this board should be looking at as far as units goes. So they should be paying taxes and rec fees that reflect 732 units. This board shouldn't make a decision until this issue is hammered out. My next issue is parking. The applicant should provide at least a number of parking spaces that the current zoning calls for. Due to the distance to the village and shopping, it is unrealistic to think that only half the applicant, occupants will have cars. It's my belief that at least three-quarters of the people living there will have cars. Their proposed land bank parking on Exhibit F-111-10 is too close to the wetlands and should be relocated, right up front, because the additional parking will definitely be needed. Traffic. The applicant's theory that all the additional students are going to be people who are currently commuting from outside the town and will now be living in New Palt. There will be a possibility of up to 732 additional cars on this road. Because of this, I think that the traffic study is flawed and should be reevaluated. There's no way that we're going to bring 732 additional people to this community without additional traffic. They also state that most of these people will be driving during non-peak times. The peak times, the traffic is horrendous, and they're trying to say that because it's horrendous during peak times and the possibility of them traveling during non-peak times, it's not going to be that bad. 732 possible additional cars is substantial. The economic and fiscal analysis. This analysis is incomplete at best. It claims that 3,000 students attending SUNY New Palt but do not live on campus or in the town or village. Where did they get these figures from? I have not seen any reports that show how they arrived at 3,000 people that live outside of the town. How many students live in the village? How many students live in the town? How many students live 5, 10, 15, 30 miles from campus? On the campus website, they state that commuters need to live within 30 miles of campus. Also, we need to know if these students are living at home with their parents because of financial reasons. Throughout the final FEIS, it states that people are commuting because they can't afford, they can't find affordable housing. According to their documents, their rents are going to be among the most expensive in the area. If this is the case, this will not lure present commuters to Park Point. It may, however, lure students who are currently living on the north side of campus, i.e. the village, to Park Point. As stated in their draft environmental impact statement, leaving as many as 732 vacant bedrooms, this could be devastating to our community as a whole. It's equivalent to a major manufacturer leaving the community. Vacancies in the village rentals will create an inability of owners to keep up with taxes, maintenance, and mortgage payments. As a result, houses will go into disrepair and foreclosure. In order for this board to be able to make a decision, it needs to know the impact that this project will have on existing rentals. I don't believe that the applicant has provided this information. Please request it from them before making any decisions. Water treatment. On page 115, line 22, it states that "All legal documents associated with the operation of the water supply and sewer treatment system are being prepared and will be subject to review and approval of the town's attorney." All these documents have not been in, and they're asking that you make a decision without having this very valuable information. Because the applicant is proposing a system that's five times larger than that is needed, it's my belief that this board and the public should have these documents so that we can make comments before any decisions are made. Regarding the closed, the public hearing, as you can see, there aren't many people here tonight, as in the past, and I believe that's because we're in the midst of the holiday season and final exams. I requested you leave the public hearing open so that people that are busy preparing and traveling for the holidays and taking exams can have an opportunity to speak to you as new information continues to pour in. Last, but not least, the IDA. If this community has any chance of Wilmerite paying their fair share of taxes, it's going to be because this board makes their approval conditional upon full taxation. If you leave it in the IDA's hands, then Wilmerite will wind up with their pilot. This is clear and evident to me, based on attending the IDA meetings. I believe that they already have the votes they need to approve the pilot. I have also been told, but not confirmed, that the lawyer for the IDA has a partner that's doing business with Wilmerite. It's also my understanding that the IDA should not entertain Wilmerite's application until after the planning board has closed the public hearing. But yet, their lawyer felt that it was appropriate to start the application, to rush it through their system. Please, if you grant approval, make it conditional upon full taxation for Park Point. And as Dave said, please don't leave this in the pro-development bias of the IDA. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Kevin?
Good evening. I wish I had prepared something. Unfortunately, I didn't. It was a busy weekend. My name is Kevin McGuire. I am taxpayer resident of the town of New Palt. Tonight, I'm not going to speak to you in that capacity. I will speak to you as chief of the New Palt Fire Department. I heard a lot, I sat here last week, I heard a lot of very, very interesting discussions, and I have no intention here of offering my opinion on whether this project should be built or should not be built, or whether there should be a pilot or should not be a pilot. As a department head from one of the emergency services, I don't believe it's my place to offer that. As a taxpayer homeowner, I have my own opinions, but tonight I'll speak to you as chief of the fire department. Last week, there was discussion about the impact on the police services. There was some very brief discussion on the impact on the rescue squad. Village trustee Bosco spoke very briefly in her statement on the impact of the fire service. I felt a need to just come here, offer you a little bit of education as to where this is going to go as far as the fire service. I'll start by saying, again, I'm not going to cast stones. I sat with the developers from Wilmerite on several occasions over probably the past year and a half. I will tell you that all of those meetings, they were very accommodating to any concerns the fire department had in regards to vehicle access. Our equipment is very large, it's very heavy. It can't be put just anywhere. They were very receptive to road whiffs, hydrant placements, parking issues that we brought to their table. I believe, I was also very receptive to their concerns about construction material, building separation, so it was, there was no animosity between Wilmerite and the fire department. The meetings were very productive. That being said, in the final environmental impact statement that I read, and I specifically am going to address the issue of emergency services, I believe the number was, that they came up with was three additional calls per month for the fire department to this facility. I think that number is, is a pretty reasonable number in regards to the effect on the fire department. The original numbers that were coming out way a while back, and I'm not even going to reference what they were, were really not based in reality. Three calls a month, 36 calls a year. I'm somewhat comfortable with that number. I think it might be just a tad higher, but I, I can live with 36 calls a month if that's their determination. So what does 36 calls a month mean for the fire service?
Do you mean a month?
No, I'm sorry. Correction. 36 calls a year increase mean to the fire department in New Palt. That would be a 5% increase in our call volume for the course of the year. This year, we're on track. It's almost the end of the year. We're going to do about 720 calls this year, give or take a few. So the 36 works out absolutely perfectly. I could say it's 5% because it is. This year has been actually a somewhat slow year, and I'm okay with that. That means things are good. We've had years where we've done 800, 900. Three years ago, we did over 1,000 calls. Three years ago, we did over a thousand calls. So seven hundred and twenty calls a year plus thirty-six more. So that's a five percent increase. So how do I quantify that in regards to money? Well, the easy math would be, we'll just do a five percent increase in the fire department's budget. Okay, that's fine. That's going to help me address fuel costs. That's going to help me address maintenance on the vehicle due to the increased time on the road. That's going to help me address training. That's going to help me address radios. What's it not going to help me address? It's not going to help me address the thirty-six more times that my firefighters are going to have to get out of bed, leave the dinner table, leave family functions, not go to a family function because the pager goes off. For a automatic alarm, a fire, a car accident, it's irrelevant what the call is. Well, yeah, okay, they're not fires. Everybody knows we'll have seven hundred and fifty fires a year. That's a fact. But the bottom line is, when the pager goes off and the call comes in, irrelevant of what the nature is, someone has to go. And that's the New Paltz Fire Department, which at this point I will tell you is one hundred percent volunteer. So saying, okay, five percent increase in call volume, increase the budget by five percent, that doesn't address that. And I don't know if you can put a monetary value on the thirty-six or forty more times my firefighters drop what they're doing with their families or businesses or work, whatever, to respond to a call. There's industry beliefs out there that will tell you, when you have a fire department that approaches the one thousand calls per year on a regular basis, that you need to start considering adding career staff. Not becoming a paid fire department, but adding career staff, much like the New Paltz Rescue Squad has been doing over the past several years. They continue to have an increased call volume, and to answer that, they continue to increase their paid paramedics and EMTs. It's a necessity to answer the calls. Right now, at seven hundred and twenty calls a year, the New Paltz Volunteer Fire Department is doing the best we can, and we are handling every single call. My education to you at this point is, here's another five percent. Okay, so now we're up to almost seven hundred and sixty. And again, these numbers go back from year to year. But we're adding five percent more. As a department head and as somebody who reviews plans for everything that's going on in the town as well as the village, I'm acutely aware that there's other large projects in the pipeline. And by no means am I saying Park Point is going to be the straw that breaks the camel's back, that we can no longer be one hundred percent volunteer. But the thing that you have to keep in mind is, this is where we're going. Here's five percent more calls. That's a fact. It's their numbers. What's the next project? Two or three percent more calls, then after that's another one percent, then after that's another five percent. There are other projects in the pipeline. The system that we all currently enjoy very much is taxpayers in this town and village. A volunteer fire service is reaching the point where we will not be able to continue the system that we currently enjoy. That's the road we're going down. Again, I thank you guys for your time. I know a little bit about volunteering my time. I also know a little bit about very tough decisions. And you guys had some very difficult decisions, and I wish you wisdom to make the right ones. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Rebecca?
Hi, Rebecca Rosler, village resident and also deputy mayor. I'm not here representing the village, but I do want to basically add to what Kevin just said regarding emergency services. First of all, he's giving that rough estimate of five percent addition to the budget. One issue that I see is if there is a pilot, that five percent will be paid for by village and town taxpayers who share essentially the emergency services budgets. Therefore, any talk of a pilot, I really feel would be unjust to the current tax load and taxpayers. I've spoken to other firefighters. I haven't been able to speak to Kevin on this, but there's a number of people that I've spoken to. And one of the big issues that we have with increased burdens in terms of fire calls, the volunteers are essentially going to get stretched out thinner. They're waking up in the middle of the night, they're leaving their kids at home, they're jumping up from the dinner table. You know, they could be running in from work just because they need to answer these calls as well as for the rescue squad. One of the issues that we also have in terms of the budget, in each state, the rules are different in terms of safety. New York happens to be one of the more stringent states in terms of equipment, safety, turnover, et cetera. When a fire truck, as Kevin will probably agree with, very often when equipment needs to be replaced, a fire truck has seen its end of life in terms of the village of New Paltz. Those machines and trucks very often get sold to other communities in other states because those other states do not have the stringent laws and regulations that we have in order to keep our volunteers safe. So already right there, you're also going to see an increase that looking at a blanket five percent isn't necessarily an accurate figure. Yes, we can budget for that. But turnout equipment with increase in calls, the fire hoses have a very short life compared to other states. So all of this equipment, the more burden that's placed on it, the more frequently it has to be replaced. And we can't really also necessarily look at an increase in number simply on the increase in population because different populations place different demands on services. And one of the things that is considered to be an issue with some of the volunteers is the calls on campus. You've got basically, you know, calls that are difficult to respond to because of the dormitory situation, and then you're going to have that here again. It's different from showing up at a one-story house. Also, one of the things that frequently happens is what I call the burnt popcorn syndrome, where these firefighters, when they have to respond to someplace like campus, if the fire alarm goes off, they have to respond. I also work out at OCS. We're considered an educational facility as well. If our fire alarm goes off out there because of burnt popcorn, someone has to respond. So my big issue with a lot of that is, again, burnt popcorn very often can need to burn out in terms of our emergency services personnel. And I think that's something that really needs to be looked at and taken seriously. If we, a rough estimate that I've seen in terms of if we were to eventually go to a paid department, we could be looking at easily, say, ten million each year to pay personnel and to change our system. And I don't think that granting a pilot allows this to be something that we put at risk. So please, I urge you to take into consideration, yes, we have volunteers, but they come at an expense not only to the other taxpayers in the community, but to their families, to our system. And please, just listen to what they have to say and take them into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Arianna? Where is she? There she is.
I left just in time, didn't I? I always had another meeting. Hello, everybody. My name is Arianna Bosco. I am a homeowner in New Paltz. I'm also on the New Paltz Village Board, and I have a statement to read. At the Planning Board Public Hearing held last Monday, December ninth, I listened to a statement read by Hudson Valley Pattern for Progress Chief Strategy Officer March Gallagher on behalf of the Pattern for Progress Board members. She repeatedly used the phrase "affordable housing" to show support for Wilmerite's Park Point housing development and their application for a tax abatement through the UC IDA pilot program. The Pattern for Progress website, patternforprogress.org, features their 2013 housing brief entitled "The American Dream Revised." The report addresses the affordability of housing in the Hudson Valley and states that average incomes are falling further and further behind the fair market rents. The report includes a chart on page seven that outlines the 2013 fair market rents throughout the Hudson Valley and paints the fair market rental rate for a two-bedroom in Ulster County at $1,197. The chart also states that 65% of renters in Ulster County are unable to afford two-bedroom apartments at this price. When looking at page eleven of Wilmerite's Economic and Fiscal Impact Report by Commune and Associates dated May fifteenth, 2013, the annual rent generated at the project is projected to be $6,466,080 with a 95% occupancy rate. That would mean that 695 of the 732 beds are occupied. When you divide that six million number by the gross rent, by the 695 beds, it equals $9,304 per year or $775 per month. So that would be $775 per person per bedroom, including utilities. Therefore, it is reasonable to assume that a two-bedroom unit at Park Point should list for at least $1,550 per month, which is $353 more per month than what Pattern for Progress stated is the fair market rental. If you consider $353 to be what monthly utilities would cost, it does still seem odd that Pattern for Progress would identify Park Point as affordable housing when they themselves said that 65% of Ulster County renters cannot afford the rents at $1,197. Pattern may feel that Park Point is useful for SUNY New Paltz and SUNY's ability to be a competitive college that draws people to the Hudson Valley. However, that is a separate discussion which does not bear relevance to Park Point's affordability. In December of 2010, Tom New Paltz Planning Board Attorney George Lithgow disclosed that he and Larry Walensky were partners at Jacovitz and Gubitz, and that Mr. Walensky was also a board member of the SUNY New Paltz Foundation, which has partnered with Wilmerite on the Park Point project. The letter stated that Mr. Walensky acts in a limited advisory role with respect to the foundation. However, Mr. Walensky is currently the vice chair of the SUNY New Paltz Foundation and is also serving as chair of the board for Pattern for Progress. Alongside him is Patrick J. Doolin, excuse me, I don't know how to pronounce his last name, who is the chair of the SUNY New Paltz Foundation and who also serves on the Pattern for Progress Board. Less surprisingly, SUNY New Paltz President Don Christian is also a member of both boards. Pattern's Gallagher is also a former chair and board member of the UC IDA. She held that seat from 2006 to 2008. While chair, Gallagher actively facilitated the pilot application and approval process for Woodland Pond, the largest single project in the history of the UC IDA, and one that has continued to cost the New Paltz taxpayers more than we bargained for. Gallagher then went on to work for Ulster County Executive Mike Heine as the Office of Business Services Director from 2009 to 2013, serving as the main point of contact for the UC IDA with the Heine administration. We previously learned from an August 2013 article in the New Paltz Current that beginning in April of 2011, Heine received campaign contributions from Park Point developer to the tune of $11,500. The campaign contributions were given under the guise of individuals that were found to be connected to Wilmerite, either as family members or through business relations. All of this is public record and can be found on the New York State Board of Elections website and the contributions and expenditure database. I look for friends of my kind. There appears to be a very close relationship between Pattern for Progress, the SUNY Foundation, Wilmerite, and the Ulster County Industrial Development Agency, which will be deciding whether Wilmerite receives millions of dollars in tax breaks. This raises questions about whether the decision that is ultimately made about the pilot will truly reflect the interests of our community, or whether powerful players have a line to advance their economic and political interests at our expense. This is not to say that there is outright corruption or payments that would be illegal under our campaign finance system, but it does raise questions. It also suggests that the people of New Paltz need to make their voices heard to ensure that the interests of the community as a whole are taken into consideration. So I'm glad to see many of you here tonight. I'm glad to see that people have been coming to these public hearings generally speaking. And for anybody who does not know, if the public hearing is closed tonight, you can submit comments up to 10 days after the hearing is closed to planzownboard@townofnewpaltz.org. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else?
Mike, I got there late.
Did you write that? I wanted to make sure of anybody.
Very short statement.
Yeah, I'm here too. All right, Kitty, you're welcome. Always have to let the town board members.
Thanks. I'm Kitty Brown, resident of the town of New Paltz, and for another 14 days, I serve on the town. 14 days, 12 minutes, and 35 hours. I wish to amend my statement from last week in which I referred to the new dormitory category added by the IDA in August 2012. I stated that the consequences of adding dormitory housing to the list of categories eligible for a pilot would be catastrophic for the taxpayers of Ulster County. It is commonly accepted that housing costs more in services than it pays in taxes. And last week, I handed in information from the American Farmland Trust with data showing how large that spread can be. However, in trying to prove my case last week, I misstated a crucial definition. On page 10 of the Ulster County's Uniform Tax Exemption Policy, it states, to quote Arianna, "Dormitory housing shall mean housing facilities designed and occupied by students attending higher education." I can't explain why the IDA attorney, its members, and its executive staff were in such a hurry to approve housing designed by students, but clearly, Park Point does not meet their definition. I just want to state that definition again. Dormitory housing shall mean housing facilities designed and occupied by students attending higher education. Page 10, Ulster County's Uniform Tax Exemption Policy. Now, you may think, well, obviously, they left out a word. Perhaps they meant to say "not designed by students." Perhaps they meant to say "full-time students." Perhaps they meant to specify what kind of higher education. Are we talking about the for-profit colleges that have recently proliferated and which often leave students in massive debt and with no useful degree? However, it is not your job to find answers to those questions. That can only happen at a new public hearing held by the IDA. So I'm hoping that your finding statement will say that since this project does not meet its own definition by the IDA, it is not eligible for a pilot, and any approval would therefore expect the project to be fully taxable. Thank you.
Thank you, Kitty. Oh, there you are. Thank you.
It's designed by students. I'm Mike Russo, town resident. And I'd like to start by thanking the board for keeping the public comment open for another week. I couldn't... I couldn't make it last week. And even though I'm sick, I kind of draw myself here just in case we don't keep the public comment open further. And I'm just going to make a few brief comments. I spent a good deal of time on the weekend reading articles about pilots and tax abatements for businesses. There's...
The reason I'm speaking now is the one that hit me the most was because I had made a suggestion when Woodland Pines was developed, that the village board looked to institute the impact fees, which is perfectly legitimate fee, like your playground fees, whatever it is. It is a perfectly legitimate fee based upon potential use of a pilot program. And it's perfectly legal in New York State. And I had recommended to the village board at the time, and I gave all the documentation on impact fees. Impact fees is a very, very good way to get around getting, you know, run over by IDA and politicians or whatever, to say you have to pay. Okay, you don't want to pay the tax, that's fine, but we can assess you under the impact law X amount of dollars because you're going to have this much impact on fire and that much impact on police and that much impact on... and doesn't care what anybody sells. Those are based upon actual numbers. And I think that's a good way. I don't know how long that takes. I don't know if you can hold off, you know. I would suggest you make that suggestion to the town board, that they look into it because it's something that could relatively be done quickly. It also helps, what I've been saying, it helps protect the citizens and helps stop people from getting into situations where they can't afford to live in it because the costs are coming. You know, who does it hurt? It hurts Wilmerite? You know, I'm sorry, you're a multi-billion dollar corporation. You know, take a hundred thousand dollars less than profit. I can't look at it that way. And I think that is a very important thing for the planning board to look at. Plus, the other people were saying that there are certain provisos that you can make within the approval. That may be another way of looking at it. You know, what we're saying, what I'm saying, and from what I heard most people saying is, nothing to do with the dawns. Just Wilmerite, pay your fair share. You know, you're a multi-billion dollar corporation. You can afford a lot more than we. And as far as that company that was here about the one Arianna mentioned.
Hannah?
Yeah. I find it interesting because her comment was, this is exactly what New York State wants. This is the kind of business that they want. Well, I have no problem with New York State wanting to bring business into the state. What the state should pay for it, not the local municipality. I mean, if the state paid all of that money, you know, we would get hit with ten dollars, you know, as opposed to a million dollars. You know, it's very understandable that they want to entice business, and it is understandable to a degree. But you pay for it. Don't make the poor municipality or the poor guy who's trying to survive in this economic time have to pay for it because you want to entice business and run around and say, hey, look at the business we enticed from New York. No, you didn't. The residents of New Pauls did. Thank you.
Thank you. Tammy?
Hi, my name is Tammy Friedman, town resident. I'm going to be pretty brief. This is my third time coming to a meeting regarding the Wilmerite project, and I thought I was going to get a lot of answers, but it seems like I have more and more questions every time I come to these meetings. And so I was originally told that this would be a good project for our economy, and I don't think so. That's my first time. I don't think so. And I'm getting a lot, you know, feedback from the people that it's not. The second thing, I was told that it's going to be affordable housing, and then I was told that it was going to be luxury housing. What is it? I don't know. Now, I don't even know what the definition of dormitory housing is, obviously. And it seems like none of us know that, except, we're kidding. But thank you for that information. I was told the development would be safe for our community and our water, and there seems to be a lot of confusion about that, even at the last meeting when the planning board was talking amongst each other. It seemed like we didn't have all the answers for that either. I was told that this would be good for the community and the economy regarding jobs. And for seven jobs, this project is reckless at best. I was told that it would be okay for the environment and it'd be environmentally friendly. And from what I heard in the report, putting energy-saving appliances and energy-saving fixtures, that is like the bare minimal requirement for anything that's built. Like a shed, basically, could be, you know, passed with that. I was told, let me see, I can go on and on. I just have a lot more questions than answers. A lot more. And I'm urging this board to continue the hearing because I'm not getting clear. And from the last meeting with you guys, I didn't see clarity here either. And I don't see what the rush is, to be honest with you. What we talked about earlier about vacancies, it's true. There are vacancies. I have apartments in town. They're not always filled. And they're not always expensive either. So I don't understand that. What's the rush? So I would like to keep this public hearing going further. I believe there should not be a pilot. I can't even understand how we're even questioning the idea of a pilot. To me, it's, I think we have the answer for that one. So I just want to say, the whole idea of the Wilmerite, I think it's wrong. I just think the project is wrong. I think that New Pauls could do a lot better than that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Dan Ginder, the 55th Street, New Pauls. I'd just say a few things. I kind of heard something, it's finals time, which is why a lot of students aren't here. They're very, you know, they're very, a lot of students are against this, but they're just very busy right now. And I hope you guys understand that this is not really an accurate representation of how students feel. First thing I'd like to say about why I love New Pauls. I love living in New Pauls because I'm close to campus, and I'm also in the downtown. It allows me to shop at local stores and keep my money in the community. It trained me not to use a car, which is something, living in the suburbs back home in Jersey, I was constantly doing. New Pauls states that, on their Simont Park Point, Dom Christian said that New Pauls wants to create, New Pauls wants to create an institution that modifies behavior for sustainability. So why are they creating a development that wants to rely on a car? Park Point will reinforce reliance on automobile. They will need a car to get anywhere. You can't expect people to lug their groceries all the way down Anaheim. It's easy when you live in town or close by, but not on that side of town. Next, I'd say a few things about New Pauls' previous ventures. Since I've been here the past two years, I've seen them develop a vending machine that doesn't work and is now costing us students lots of money, and no one uses it. And half the time, it just doesn't work. They've been remodeling buildings that, from my opinion, did not need to be remodeled. They're perfectly fine. I'm sick of seeing my school being used as a business and not an institution of higher learning. I really encourage you guys to keep this hearing open. You know, I really see local builders to be used if we're going to be building more developments. And, you know, they actually have an interest in keeping our town as the way it is in New Pauls, as a small community. But if Wilmerite truly cares about this community, they'll understand why us residents and us students want to keep this hearing open. And I really hope you guys do the same because you have the final call. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak at the public hearing tonight? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak at the public hearing tonight? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak at the public hearing tonight?
Hearing none.
Hearing none. Who calls the public hearing for tonight, and the board will have discussion on that at this, right now, on it. I think that's the only thing we have left on the agenda. Just for the public to know, closing the public hearing allows, as somebody had mentioned, written comments. We can actually leave the period of time open for written comments for as long as we think is apropos to the situation. We've always accepted written comments up to now. There'll be a period after a closing of a public hearing that the written comments will still be accepted on it. And so from that point of view, that still needs to be decided, and we haven't decided that yet. George, just want to touch space on the role of the public hearing in review.
What I did was to create some excerpts from the D.C. handbook, and that basically outlines what the purpose of a public hearing is. You can take a quick look at it if you like. It's to ensure there is opportunity for public disclosure, solicit informative comments by interested parties. In some cases, it can provide opportunity for a sponsor to discuss the project. And we did hear presentations from a sponsor at the outset of the hearing. Basically, the comments are intended to go, the expectation is there will be substantive comments on the impacts, on the information that's included in the EIS, potential mitigation, and alternatives. The D.C.'s view of commentary that's directed as opposition or support for a project is that it's information available to you, but it's not something that is typically responded to in the context of the EIS. It's information that can go into your site plan, it's information that will be available to other agencies who consider the record of this proceeding, as well as whatever proceeding they have themselves. So if the information is being developed, if there are new substantive issues which are raised, it may be appropriate to consider holding the hearing open. And you have to look at the nature of the comments you received and make that determination.
Any questions for George?
I actually have a motion that I'm interested in us voting on tonight. So before I read the motion, I want to preface it with a few prepared remarks. After countless hours in review, I fear that the New Pauls Park Point's adverse impacts cannot be mitigated. We've heard comments and concerns expressed from our two largest taxing authorities, the Board of Ed and the Town Board. The impacts Park Point will have on New Pauls is greater than four million dollar police budget, and volunteer fire department could be debated for a long time. It has been suggested that even after a pilot is established, impacts and benefits may be reassessed over the years and the pilot readjusted. This seems complicated and expensive for New Pauls. And all this extra consideration for a project that third-party financial consultant, CGR, said will spur minimal new economic activity for New Pauls. The February 2013 Ulster County IDA minutes on Park Point included the following. Quote, "We, the county IDA board, are not dictated by the town, county, or school board." Period. "We will make an independent decision on this application ourselves." End quote. Our community has done the research. We cannot afford to have a separate entity make the wrong decision for New Pauls' future. Seeker expressly states that it seeks a suitable balance of social, economic, and environmental factors be incorporated into planning and decision-making, and it is not the intention of Seeker that environmental factors be the sole consideration in decision-making. Here's my motion. Our board asks our planning board attorney begin researching, using the Seeker framework, how to construct a finding statement that is conditional on no pilot and full taxation for Park Point because adverse impacts cannot be mitigated. So I put that as a motion for our...
I second the motion.
Second the motion.
All right, can we, can you read that one again?
Sure. Our board asks our planning board attorney begin researching, using the Seeker framework, how to construct a finding statement that is conditional on no pilot and full taxation for Park Point because adverse impacts cannot be mitigated.
The adverse impacts you're applying to is the pilot?
Fiscal.
No, the adverse impacts that I'm applying to have to do with a variety of economic impacts that we've discussed.
No, wait a minute. Let me get it straight. Basically, it's the fiscal impacts vis-à-vis the pilot or lack thereof.
Well, the pilot is one thing, but...
There are other economic impacts.
There are a variety of adverse impacts that I do not believe can be mitigated using the Seeker framework.
One of the things that comes out of a final environmental impact statement is a finding statement, which is what you're leading up to. To me, it doesn't require him to do research. It's basically to bring one together, but not only to address your issue or the economic analysis and pilot issues, but to address all the economic issue, all the environmental issues that have been addressed throughout the FEIS. And to address each one independently of itself. Thus, there is something on the section on soils, there's a section on water, there's a section on sewer, there's a section on traffic, and there's definitely a section on community impact, fiscal impact. The finding statement's going to include all that, including what you want in the statement. And it's our determination at that time to read the finding statement and to agree with the language that's in the finding statement to that effect, and to vote on it as a board. So I, not having anything against your proposal, but that's basically what we have to do. I don't make a foregone conclusion of what that language says until I read the entire document.
What I'm trying to do with this motion is I want to get a sense from our board if we think it's important for our attorney to focus on using the Seeker handbook, you know, information that he collected to present us with this information, to frame out a conditional finding statement specifically related to no pilot and relative to home rule. That's what I'm concerned about and what I'm interested in constructing.
I may be going back and forth. No, I don't know.
I can read the motion again, and we can vote on it.
No, I just think that it's, that's what we're going to do anyway. So...
Well, I just want to be clear. I think that's my intention.
Can it hurt to have this motion, basically?
Well, I would want to do is to amend it to include the other environmental, in fact, that we did, you know, pages of study work on in addition to it.
Yeah.
I offer a suggestion. I think what Tim is saying is he'd like to see an alternative that applies to legal standards and considers whether those standards can lead to a conclusion that the pilot should be conditioned based upon the impacts and whether that's in there or not, and it's, you know, written in the alternative. Yes, it does. No, it doesn't. And present those in the evidence that would support both alternatives. And you would review them and make your determination as to which one you believe is just about. You know, this is obviously the most contentious of the issues, but there may be other issues where I would present a draft finding statement that would say, depending on this, you may want to say this. If you don't believe that's a significant impact, you may want to say this instead. So it's not that uncharacteristic of the process.
And this is just research that would help us write our, you know, our own finding statements? Yeah, I mean, it makes sense to me.
But again, I think, was that clarification? I'm comfortable with George's guess.
That seems fine to me. I mean, Tom, do you have any feedback?
Especially adding the environmental...
Peter, man, anybody else?
Can you repeat that again, George?
I doubt it.
Peter's turn. No, essentially, I would draft alternative, examining both the, examining the circumstances, laying out the facts, and include a conclusion, a pilot could be considered on whatever terms justified by the EIS, or that a pilot can't be considered because of the impacts and so forth in the EIS. And on how the standards would apply to those two determinations. You evaluate the facts and you make a determination as to which one should be adopted.
And I want to be clear, there, when you said conditions, there'll be conditions all along in a finding statement.
Absolutely.
Not just on this. There are, we've gone through FEIS and issues and our, we need monitoring would be one of the, there are a number of conditions.
I just wanted to get out front because I think this is an important condition for us to consider.
Oh, yes, I agree. I just didn't want, I didn't, I guess I was just trying to get across that there were other conditions, there were other issues in there too.
This research into a condition will not be the only condition that we may consider in our finding statement.
Oh, no. Oh, no. Yeah.
But it will probably be the one that you'll be most interested. Well, it'll be an important one.
Great. Let's make the last...
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have a discussion on it? Any other people have a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Based on sending George off to begin his work on a finding statement, I think we've got a good sense where the public is on a number of issues that were raised at the public hearing these last three meetings. And I would like to make the motion to close the public hearing. Two things to bear in mind on that is, one, we have to establish a time period for getting in written comments. And two, is we need a, we'll end up with a time period because we only received the first set of minutes from the first meeting. We still have to review all that to see if we have any issues that we have to discuss as a board and resolve that were brought up during a public hearing. Obviously, we've heard a lot about the pilot, but we want to make sure that we go through all the written comments and all the transcriptions of the public hearings to continue our discussion on those outstanding issues that were raised during these periods. But I think we've received comments, we've received written comments. I would propose leaving, like we did last time, leaving a comment period open till the end of the year to allow for written comments to come in on that.
Well, I think the end of the year, though, because of the pressure of the holidays, is too soon.
January 15.
I know a lot of people won't have a chance to review things adequately. You can't just put your life on hold in order to read all these pages.
But the document's been out since October.
The document's been out. Another question that I have, though, is that we've gotten all these comments, and as we get the transcripts and we do have written comments, can they be posted also so that other people can see if their questions are already being asked?
All right.
You know, not everyone's watching TV. And clearly, just because of the way we hear the same questions repeated, other people don't know what people have already said.
I guess, the only issue I would have is logistics on it. I'm not sure, we have three hours of transcript on a webpage, crashes it or not.
They're in the minutes, though.
It's a PDF, isn't it?
You know what?
It's a PDF.
Yeah, the November 25 document was a 111-page PDF. I don't think it'll crash.
No, it'll, 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 website.
Well, to the extent that we can, and I'll leave that to Kelly's capability of the comments and the ability to post them on our planning board website, we'll do that. Now, just for the public's wellbeing, and not to pick on the transcriber, is that we only received the first set of transcriptions this past week from the November 25 meeting. So there's two other, there'll be two other sessions, December 9th and December 16th, still to come, but expect that in a couple of weeks. But well, to the extent we can post the written comments and the transcriptions to the planning board website, we'll do so. So you can review the additional information on there. I think we can do that.
Thank you.
I would like to get all the written comments in such that we would have the ability to have them reviewed prior to our January 13 meeting. And so we can discuss all the comments at that 13th meeting. So I'm willing to, you know, how short a time period do you want to have to review it? And if I go back 13th and subtract seven days from it, I got January 6th as a last day to get comments in. Will give us a week to review them. But it gives the board, it gives the public closer to 20 days, business days, for comments.
Question for George. How long do you think that your portion of this project will take?
The finding, draft finding statement? With the holidays, it's hard to predict exactly, but I'm thinking by the 13th, I'll have a draft.
So before we discuss the draft, the first thing we had to do is ensure if any outstanding issues that have been raised, we have an opportunity to discuss. Then, once we decide on that, let me go to it. And I expect that the finding statement will be discussions back and forth for a number of meetings, not just that one there. That's usually what happened in the past, at least from my experience. So a motion is on the table to close the public hearing, to allow written comments to January 6th.
And that's received by close of business.
Close of business, January 6th.
What day of the week is it?
It should be a Monday.
It's a Monday, Monday before the...
And then how does it work in terms of how many days do we have? Like, in the past, we discussed 30 days to write the finding statement after we receive final statements. Is that what we're doing?
Yeah, those deadlines are typically flexible. They're not mandatory, they're...
Suggested.
They're recommended, they're things which are supposed to try for.
Sure.
But depend on the circumstances, and this would seem to be a circumstance warrants a little bit more time than average. Proceed forward diligently with good faith, and you'll not get into trouble.
That's why Mike was talking about a handful of meetings where we're discussing the finding statement, so we're not actually drawing a line in the sand as to when we're going to be done.
There's no clock at which something terrible happens to you. There is the instruction to proceed diligently with good faith.
And again, there's...
This board has been doing that.
We will have to go through each one of the areas, read the language, be comfortable with the language, and what we'll do is we'll try to select certain areas to, so we're bad, and try to do parts as we go through it, not to tackle the whole thing in one night, but to have it available for us and to read it. Finding statements take a while. There's a lot of work that goes into the language that's in a comfort level of them on it. And to get a consensus of that, I'm sure there'll be some debate on a lot of issues. But that's the purpose of having that discussion over a number of different meetings.
Yeah, I'd be fine with closing the public hearing. I understand what people have said about students have finals and that it's the holidays, but I feel like we have to have some kind of stopping point. But I think that public hearings have been really informative. It's been really wonderful to know that we live in such an engaged community. It's been really great, so thank you. But I really want to get a jump on getting in there.
So we have a motion on the table. Any other comments, discussions, comfortable?
Well, should we investigate whether or not the design was indeed done by students?
Ah, well, that's not to debate those issues. That's what we're supposed to talk about. Kitty raised a very good point, and George can take it under advisement on their, from a language point of view, does it make sense? Is it defendable, justifiable? I don't want to go to court, Kitty, if I don't have to. You know that. I don't want to go to court, Kitty, if I don't have to, you know that. So, but that's one of the things we'll talk about. Okay, a motion on the table and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. To re-echo, we've closed the public hearing on it. We will accept written comments. Plan, zone, go ahead.
Board.
Board, plan, zone, board.
Town.
Town of New Paltz, all one big, long word.
All lowercase.
All lowercase. Dot O R G. And you can send them email, you can drop them off at your Road on Crown and drop them off with the planning board or mail it to the town hall, planning department. We'll take them any way that you feel most comfortable sending them in. I echo, I guess, this point of view. This has been a very good public, I've had a number of public hearings, and David knows about a number of public hearings we've had. You've been very well, I'll call behave, but very informative, too. I thank you all for your comments, your interest in the project, your interest in the town, and I thank you for coming out on cold December nights that you have been. We have one less thing on the agenda, and I just want to touch base with that with the board members.
This is on the ZBA and the Park Point variances.
Dave, the Park Point variances were for the ZBA.
Height and setback.
Height and setbacks of building separation. Let's take Dunkin' Donuts variance first. I proposed sending to the ZBA recommendation to grant the Dunkin' Donut variances since it was us who suggested it. So if the board's comfortable with that, we'll forward one, ZBA, to put the cooler in the back and not mess up the parking lot.
Great.
Okay. On the Park Point variances, again, there was the building height and the distance between the buildings worried. And I think --
Why would we --
Because they're meeting the 14th.
I'm fine with those.
No, they're meeting the 14th or they're meeting the week before us, 14th.
I'm fine with those three variances, but my question is, what if we conclude that we're interested in another variance during the finding statement? Does that mean that the ship has already sailed, or how does this work?
If you adopt a condition that would require a variance, it would have to, I believe it would have to apply for it, then would be considered, if there was need for new information or new records, that would be addressed in the public hearing. So you can do it, it doesn't prevent, I'm not sure how you would require it. You could, you could, a secret condition could determine some aspect of the project that be changed or modified in the nature that would require a variance. That has not been, my stance is we open the public hearing on these three variances, so they would presumably be continuing it, and they could renotice it with a new variance in addition.
But why don't we just wait and do them all together? If there's a possibility of our board recommending additional variance.
Because I think they've established a public hearing on the 14th for the three.
So then what was that, we discussed?
Well, again, it would be.
Well, you could, in your recommendation, say with respect to the tree, this is what we think about what has been proposed. However, we are in the process of completing our findings with lead agency.
Yeah, which might involve the water.
And we may require project modifications or change or require additional variances. You, the ZBA, may wish to consider keeping that hearing open to allow that opportunity to be considered with the other three.
Okay, that language seems fine to me.
What'd you have in mind when you raised that?
Well, I don't know, I mean, I --
Oh, it's not, that wasn't anything specific yet, but it could.
One variance that we've discussed several times is the idea of not just land banking the parking, but actually having a variance to have less parking.
The difference being that there would be, there would not be a provision for land bank parking to be expanded in the future.
Right.
The variance would allow fewer spaces, and that would be the parking area.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So if there were, you know, that issue's been raised with the, by the ENCB with regard to some areas that appear to be within the offer.
Well, basically, what the ENCB said, if you're going to land bank the parking, don't put anything there. It's grass. Don't even put gravel down or anything else like that on it. So there are a couple of different avenues to get there, but if we think that, we've talked about land bank parking, that it may be a variance to reduce the number of parking spaces rather than land bank it, we should put that in as, we haven't come to a conclusion on that, but that's what our thinking is in that area.
Yeah, we're just throwing out a potential example. That's a potential example.
The other thought I've had about this is you have these three variances, which are basically justified as allowing an opportunity to cluster development on the property so it avoids areas of environmental sensitivity. I think you may wish to make that point in your analysis or in your recommendation and encourage condition that that is the predicate for granting the variance. So that if someone were to, at a later date, propose to --
Expand.
Expand into the woodlands or somehow impact the wetlands with an expanded project that develops additional area, it would be considered in the same context as a clustered subdivision. The cluster is typically done in a way that says, this is what you could do on the entire property, but because you're doing something good, will allow you to do it in a denser or more compact fashion. But that open space which is being preserved is not available for future development, so you could never have more development than you could have had on the property in the first case. And this is analogous to that. You're allowing these buildings go up to have a more dense footprint in order to avoid development in the surrounding areas. And I think it would be appropriate to make note of that in your recommendation to the ZBA and suggest that may be something they would wish to condition.
But how would you put that restriction on about future development? Well, legally, I mean.
Details will come to the ZBA. But I could craft something that I, it's not something you just want to throw out there, but you want to think about and develop appropriate condition that reflects what benefit is being approved by these variances and ensure that it follows into the future.
So we'll craft a letter like that, we'll put in that, checking that we're still reviewing the site plan, that additional variances may be required, for instance, I'll give an example. And we'll talk about parking and land bank parking, and the possibility of, with land bank parking, of land banking it in its natural state, if I can use that, or maybe going to a variance to reduce the number of parking spaces required by the town code. Just to give them a heads up that we're still thinking about something to that effect. Okay.
Yeah.
We'll do that, then. We'll get that out to them. Is there anything else before the board? Oh, a motion to adjourn. Good idea. That's, I think, the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I wish you all a very happy holiday, take some time off, meet with the family and things of that sort. I thank you all for coming out.